Okay, it's 10:00 AM, March 30th. So at this time, I'll call together, call to order the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners meeting, budget meeting, hopefully the final budget meeting for March 30th, 2023. And ask everybody here to please silence your electronic devices so that we don't have interruptions to guest speakers. And at this time, I'd ask you to all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Commissioner Walt Noasad.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can certainly tell he's ex-military. Thank you. Public comment, at this time, we'll go into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, then a yellow light, which indicates that you have 30 seconds left and should conclude your comments. And once the red, the light turns red, we ask you to please sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will be also taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific agenda item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment when that agenda item is heard. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. We have only two action items on the agenda today, items number two and three. So if you're going to speak on those, we actually wait until those discussions take place. So is there any public comment here in chambers? Since we know public comment, I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Noasad, seconded by Commissioner Hales to approve the administrative agenda as proposed. All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. We'll go into the administrative agenda. Item number one for presentation only, presentations by county department directors on the operations of their respective departments, including departmental goals and objectives, achievements, benchmarks, and performance objectives. This is being done by our chief financial officer, Ms. Terri Willoughby.
Thank you, Chair, Terri Willoughby, for the record. Before we get into the departmental presentations, Mr. John Herb is here to answer questions as a follow-up from yesterday, if you'd like to take those before we get into the presentation, so he could go do road stuff.
Sure, that would be great. Do you want to go to the microphone, Mr. Herb? Mr. Herb is our Roads Division Manager, is that, is that the right title?
For the record, John Herb, Douglas County Public Works, I'm the Transportation Engineering Manager.
Oh, okay.
Which I do oversee three different funds that have been presented to you, the 232 Road Operating Fund, the 236 Tahoe Transportation District Funds, and the 430 Regional Transportation Commission Funds. I did watch the meeting last night on, yesterday, and you did have quite a few questions for me from that meeting. And I will, some of them I can remember, you, there was a discussion on crack sealing. We are trying a new product, we put some down this fall, I'll give you guys a sample to pass around.
I have plenty of samples of roads on my tires.
So normally, this, normally in the past, the crack sealing material we use is a hot liquid asphalt that goes in, and we do it during the wintertime or in the fall because it needs to set up and be in a hot material, it goes in the cracks and it'll set up quicker when it's cool weather. The problem we've been having with it, as Commissioner Noasad had said, it seems to disappear over the months, especially in the summertime. It gets hot, we're having extreme heat now in the summer, a long periods of it, and so it'll eventually soak down into the base and under the, under the pavement. This is a mastic material, this new product, it hardens a lot harder, it has aggregate in it. And the square block we use for the larger gaps, there's two different mixed designs with it, and the smaller one is what we'll be using for the smaller cracks. We did put down the stuff for the larger cracks in the, in the fall, and Buckeye Road was one of them, and we did some cracks on South Santa Barbara. And I'm really pleased with the way it's holding up through the wintertime, because plows can be very hard on materials, especially crack-filled materials, because there is a, because of the crack has formed, there's a little bit of a divot even when you fill it, and so the plows hit that pretty hard. And this material's holding up quite well. We do have more to put down of the crack seal material, and we're hoping to do that in the spring when things settle down a bit. It's been a, it's been a long, hard winter. I have a crew of six, I'm trying to hire two more, and they put in a lot of hours. So when things slow down and we stop having to repair from winter and the flooding events, then we'll get back to our general road maintenance, such as crack sealing and striping and other things. So I'll take any other questions you guys want to talk about.
Well, I'm kind of curious how it goes in, I, this is, this is kind of the top section, right? That I'm looking at with the little pebbles. Does it go in as a liquid, or does it go in as a solid material like this?
The material comes, you have to rent a machine for this specific material, and we don't have a crack filling machine anymore, the maintenance on those are horrible, and we can rent them for a lot cheaper over the life cycle than we can purchase one. So as with this one, it's a machine that we rent, and it has a large hopper in it that you put the material in and it heats up and melts it into a liquid, and then it's put down, and then the gravel is, the little pea gravel, you just throw on top afterwards as it's setting up.
So it fairly well, I mean, we've had a rough season. So.
What was the question again?
Is it, is it holding, your experience so far, is it's holding up and doing a good job for us?
Yeah, the stuff we did on Buckeye is between Orchard and East Valley, and so when we had the road closed out there, I was able to walk it, when we had it closed for, to pump the reservoir during the big rain event, I was able to walk the road and look at it at a close eye to it, and it's holding up really well. So I'm really pleased with the outcome. It's not guaranteed to last forever, but it'll last a lot longer than what we've been experiencing with the other material.
Are you primarily using it for cracks, or what about potholes itself?
It can be used for potholes, but we primarily use it for cracks. Like I said, the, the long skinny one, that's for small cracks, and the other design, which is the block, is for the, the larger cracks and a large surface area if we need to do it, such as a pothole.
And I guess the other question I think we had yesterday was whether or not it was going to be available to our GIDs to incorporate?
So the towns were in on, when they did a demonstration, the company came here and did a demonstration project last summer, both towns were involved, and I believe County Garnaville did purchase some of this for their streets.
Commissioner Noasad?
Yeah, a question on this, there's a fabric on the bottom, is that just for display purposes?
No, that was just so they could make samples, you know, they poured it in a pan in the fabric, so.
Commissioners, any other questions that maybe come out? Okay, well, obviously, we're looking for hopefully a somewhat permanent solution, right? So that we, or at least a longer than, than one season solution, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm hoping this lasts several years compared to what we've been experience, experiencing.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions, I guess. What's that? Yeah, no, any, anything that you, yeah. If he's here, use, use your time with him.
The, the one, it's not so much a question as an area of interest that I know will be coming to us later, but we have this TTTD fund, Tahoe Douglas Transportation-
Transportation District.
-District Fund, and it has quite a bit of money in it, I think 1.5 million, and it gets, it gets 1 point something annually. Do you keep a list of potential projects for that?
I-
Or, or maybe just speak to us about what your thinking is on, on that, for that fund?
The RTC keeps a five-year work plan, and it's coming to the RTC next week. So that, there's projects up at Tahoe that have moved up in priority now because of the winter. We, we have some, a lot of potholes and damage up on Lake Parkway, and, and so there was a SIP for that, and that'll be being paid out of that fund as well. Past projects we've done, we reconstructed a couple of years ago, Lake Village Drive, using the 236 funds. We participated in some of the match or, for trails, the Warrior Way to the Zephyr Cove Signal, there's a pedestrian pathway, bike path type, that was 236 funds that were used for that. And so there's other projects in the future, the Casino Corridor, US-50 Revitalization Plan, even though it's changed somewhat because of South Lake Tahoe, there are some improvements they want to do to the downtown corridor and the intersection of US-50 and Lake Drive, Lake Parkway. And so we'll be offering some of the match to that, and then those funds also go towards the MPO, which is Tahoe Transportation District, TT, or TTD. And we, per past board resolutions and requirements, we do pay in to them yearly. And then also snow plowing, a portion of the snow plowing that's done up at Lake Tahoe comes out of those funds, which is going to be pretty high this year, so.
Is there a way to put this in writing of what the projects are going to be, and you're planning in the future, and the cost, because one of the items that is being presented to us is how much to fund the microtransit system, it'd be nice to know.
Yeah, Terri Willoughby, for the record, we, we will be bringing the entire capital improvement plan back in mid-April, and that will have that information in it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Herb? Mr. Rice?
Sir, you, we're talking about the Casino Core, the corridor there, that some improvements to be made, that's end dot in federal highway, is it not?
US-50 is end dot in federal highways, that is correct. The project is being, I guess, managed by the Tahoe Transportation District, and then they'll, they're, they're looking at improvements to Lake Parkway and the intersection of US-50, which we would contribute a portion to.
So are we talking about from, from Cale into, to State Line, or what areas are we talking about here?
I believe Carl Hastings' project that he's looking at moving forward is, is pretty much from Kingsbury into the Casino Corridor with sidewalk improvements on both sides, pedestrian improvements between Lake Parkway and, and the state line, and then improvements to the actual road and the intersection of Lake Parkway.
Okay, I was, since the, the vision was taken away from us when South Lake Tahoe decided that they didn't want us to go through the Loop Road process, this, this is going to be something that will improve pedestrian safety as well as improve the, the visual quality?
Yes, that's the goal of the project, is to improve mobility of beds and bikes as well as some of the traffic congestion that's up there now.
Thank you.
Mr. Herb, you, you call, you call Lake Parkway, is it more commonly known as Loop Road, is that what you're kind of just-
Upper and Lower Loop is a nickname of it, the locals up there, but it's like Parkway.
Wanted to make sure I wrap my head around this, so. Any other questions, Mr. Herb? No? Okay, okay, thank you so much for coming by, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you for having me.
So as we, thank you, so as we go through, Commissioners, as we go through the rest of today, if you have questions of the presenters, please, oh, okay, yes, I didn't want to possibly munch into that. Take, anyways, as long as you're not tripping over another commissioner, another person asking a question, please feel free, you don't need to be acknowledged to, to do that, we want kind of an open forum here on this, on this project today. So with that, Ms. Willoughby.
Terri Willoughby, for the record, thank you, we do have a presentation by the Community Services Team, and with that, I'll turn it over to them so they can present information on their-
Mr. Chairman, members of the County Board of Commissioners, I'm Scott Morgan, and I am delighted to present a couple of divisions out of the Community Services Department, make presentations regarding some of the funds that provide outstanding services to the residents of Douglas County. As you are aware, the Community Services Department is exclusively an external service provider, which means all we do is serve your residents and the delightful people of Douglas County, our visitors and guests as well. Our presentation today is going to focus on the Room Tax Fund, the Social Services Fund, and the Senior Services Fund. And there were a number of questions as I've been listening into the meetings, and I'm not sure if you'd like me to address some of those now, or if you'd like to have those questions answered when we talk about those particular funds, because it may bring up some additional questions as well.
So if you don't mind, Mr. Morgan, and we appreciate your attendance today, along with your, I'm not exactly sure what-
I will be introducing Assistant Director Brooke Adi, as well as Senior Budget Analyst Jeff Bonner, and they are actually going to be making the presentation today as part of the transition plan. This is my last budget that I'll be presenting to Douglas County, so this will be a delight for me to sit back and enjoy the show while these two talented individuals put on the presentation.
Grab a po, a bag of popcorn and, right, okay. So if you don't mind, folks, as we go through this, rather than try to address questions all the way at the end, as we have questions by the Commissioners, I hope you don't mind we, us interrupting you so that we can get a little bit more clarification at that particular point. Right, right, Commissioners? So, thank you, okay.
So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Assistant Director Adi. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Assistant Director Adie.
Okay. Good morning, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. My name is Brooke Adie. I'm the Assistant Director for Community Services. We have a PowerPoint presentation that we are going to be showing you, and if you are on the website, if you look at the supplemental attachment, it is starting on page 434. The slide number one talks about our mission as an organization. A lot of the slides are for informational purposes, so I might go through some of them kind of quickly, but if you have questions, please let me know. Slide number three talks about, today we're going to talk about social services, parks, recreation, senior services, and DART. We will not be talking about animal services or weed control as they were presented as part of the general fund. Although both of those budgets are equally important, they are not as complex as the budgets we're going to talk about today. So this is an opportunity for us to highlight the many programs that are operated within our department. The funding sources that we'll be discussing today are Room Tax, which is 234, 215, and 216 for social services, and 260 for senior services. The statute requires that funds be used for these purposes. Since we're an external department, we provide support and services to other departments and to the public, primarily with Room Tax. The Room Tax Fund is dedicated to parks, recreation, promotion at the lake and in the valley, and to the state, roads, and to Lake Tahoe Transit. This slide outlines the primary services that we provide through parks. Next are our primary services for recreation. Next is our Room Tax revenue sources. I'd like to spend some time to talk about the revenue sources, including the Room Tax that supports parks and recreation, specifically the Room Tax, the transient lodgers license tax, which I will now refer to as the TLLT, and the $5 surcharge. There are two pieces to the Room Tax. One is the state mandated Room Tax authorized under NRS to collect 10 cents Room Tax in the lake and in the valley. The second portion is a county ordinance that created the TLLT, which added 4 cents to the lake and 3 cents to the valley. So the total Room Tax collected is 14 cents at the lake and 13 cents in the valley. It is estimated for the '23-'24 budget year to be $22,8,420 in Room Tax and, and the TLLT.
So, Ms. Adie, that, so that 14 cents, that's basically per dollar raised?
Correct.
Okay, that 14 cents, so for every dollar that's generated, 14, 14 cents is added on top of that, 13 cents in the valley, 14 cents at the lake, okay.
Brooke Adie, yes, that is correct. Here are the breakdown of the funds that are collected. 63% of the funds go to Douglas County Promotion and Convention Center, and then 27% of it goes to Parks and Recreation. As you see on this slide, there are several pass-throughs that are not in the budget that go to state, state promotion, the Tahoe Transportation District, and to county roads. This slide represents the breakdown of the 14 cents that's generated at the lake. So 65% of those funds go to promotion, and this is the amount that's at the bottom of the slide. And 25% of the funds go to Parks and Recreation.
Now, these funds are generated on, separately from the property tax revenue that's generated from RDA 2 that's capped at 1.3 million a year out of property taxes. Also goes to TDVA for the payment of the bond for the event center. Is that correct? So that's on top of this.
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, that is correct. That, these numbers do not include the RDA funds that go to pay debt service for the event center.
Brooke Adie, again, this slide represents the breakdown of the 13 cents that's generated in the valley. So 43% of those funds go to promotion, and 46% of the funds go to Parks and Recreation. This slide explains the $5 per night surcharge. So, effective in 2019, SB 461 was created, created a $5 per night surcharge to all hotel rooms and other transient lodging within the Lake Tahoe township. This includes, this is included in the Room Tax revenue. So these funds, minus a 1% administrative fee, is distributed to the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority. The Room Tax is a very volatile funding stream, and revenue can be greatly impacted by events like weather. So if there's a lot of snow and the pass is closed, it limits people's ability to come and stay at the hotel. Or due to emergency events, like we saw during the Caldor and Tamarac fires.
Okay, so I want to, want to stop here again and say, okay, so we have 2.7 million dollars that's budgeted, that's the $5 per night surcharge, plus the 1.3 million in property tax revenue, plus the other Room Tax revenue going to TDVA of another 13 million a year, right? So, so we, we, our county is, through this process, generating a tremendous amount of money going directly to TVA, TDVA, for the payment of the bond to build the event center. That would be my observation. All of those funds go to that process, right?
I'm confused now. None of this goes towards the bond, the 2002, the projected budget for 2023, '24, the $2,007, and then the 13 million or whatever it was. That goes towards 13 million, well, it's 11 million to TDVA. That goes towards their operations and their promotions. That's separate from the RDA 2 money that's coming in, correct?
I, I think Mr. Wadley has an explanation here, but the, the, as I understand it, the, the 11 million is for operations, promotions, and whatever else. But what I'm trying to say, Mr. Tarkanian, specifically, the whole purpose of the $5 per night surcharge was strictly for the payment of the bond. It was. That's why the state legislature passed that particular $5 per night surcharge. In addition to that, there is the 1.3 million that's raised in property taxes. I realize that's a whole number of subject other than this Room Tax Fund, but, so, so basically 2.7 plus another 1.3. So about $4 million roundabout numbers is going to help pay off the bond of the event center, specifically for that event center. Mr. Wadley, did you have anything to share with us?
Sure. Zach Wadley, Deputy District Attorney. So what you described, Mr. Gardner, is generally accurate. The $5 per night surcharge was passed by the legislature as a specific, separate add-on to, to Room Taxes within the lake. That money can be used for purposes of, of construction and operation of the event center. So years from now, when that bond is in fact paid off, that $5 surcharge can also be used for ongoing operations. So there, there are other components of the Room Taxes that go to TDVA that can conceivably be used for purposes of the event center, construction cost, and operations. But the, the other component that, that Ms. Adie already talked about of the Room Tax, let me get back to it, hang on. The, just over $13 million, that, that primarily, and I'll say this roughly, primarily that money is used for the operations and promotions that are engaged in by TDVA, not necessarily the event center itself.
Mr. Chair, Scott Morgan, Community Services Director. We, I jumped ahead to slide 21, which talks on the expense side, what actually gets paid out for promotion. And it, it wraps up the total, slide 21.
Okay, I, I just had a real quick question in regards to the, the $5 per night surcharge. There was no sunset date on that one, so, so that will continue even after that bond is paid off in 30 years?
That's my understanding. All, Zach Wadley, Deputy District Attorney, I, I'll verify that for you, but my recollection is that there was no sunset date on that.
And so you'll see on there, there's $15,844,000 that goes to promotion. And, and this is a generalization where it says the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority. It also includes a $75,000 contribution to the Chamber in that dollar amount. And there's also mention of the LTVA, or the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, that receives a portion of that. But that is the money that comes from Room Tax as well as the surcharge in this budget. It does not include the RDA funds, nor does it include the funds from 236, the Tahoe Transportation District, that goes to fund the microtransit at your discretion that you have allocated. This is just purely funds that come out of the 234 budget, the Room Tax Fund, that goes to promotion, both lake and valley, for a grand total of $16,616,000. And then, I'll hop back up, but I wanted to jump because we were talking about total allocations for promotion, and this slide kind of sums that up. And I put in the cart before the horse a little bit. We wanted to just clarify that question and then go back talking about revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Sorry to interrupt. I just, just wanted to get some clarification on that, so. Okay, you, I'm sorry, you may proceed.
Thank you. Brooke Adie, again. Here we talk about the sales tax for Parks and Recreation, Library, and for seniors. This is called the PALS tax. This is how these funds are distributed. 20% of the tax is for Parks and Recreation, 25% for our seniors, and then 55% for the library. And this tax was voter-approved specifically for these services. Next, we'll talk about the utility operator fee. This fee was authorized in 2011 by county ordinance specifically for the community and senior center to handle the increased cost of operating specifically for the building. There, on this slide, there is an error where it says current year is budgeted. It should say $475,000, not the $413, which is on the slide. These funds are authorized to be used for operation maintenance, equipment, and construction needs at the center. The increased fee on the public utilities was half of 1%. The fees are added to electric bill, natural gas, and phone. It is not reflective on your water, sewer, or propane bills, so.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
And go back one slide? Just trying to fully understand this, or better understand this. PALS voter-approved, result of AB 16. Can you tell me about the AB 16 part of that?
Back in 2000, Douglas County initiated an advisory question. In fact, it was in 1998, and it was a result of AB 616, which we call the Historic Room Tax Shift. That bill, AB 616, shifted 65% of the Room Tax, 10% of the, or of the 10 cents Room Tax at Lake Tahoe to the Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority, or the Tahoe Douglas Visitor Authority. Prior to that, they're receiving approximately 30%. And because the lake, back in the time, and I, and tell, stop me if I'm getting too historic, there was a time when the voters at the lake were pretty upset with the school district and the amount of funding that they were receiving for the, the lake schools. And so there was talk to form their own county, because you can only have a school district by having your own county. So they formed the Lake Tahoe Citizens Committee, and it was well-attended, 500 people typically at a meeting. And they hired Harvey Whitmore, a pretty famous lobbyist, who was also a Glenbrook resident, to help them form their own county in order to get additional funds for the school district. So they formed the Citizens Committee, and they came up with 13 points. Number 13 of their 13 points was more money for promotion. So when the legislative cycle came and went, the only thing that happened was AB 616 that shifted 65% of the 10 cents Room Tax at the lake for promotion. That left Douglas County shorthanded to fund its park, recreation, as well as the library was in the fund at that time. And so we worked really hard, canvassed the neighborhood. I literally walked every house in the Garnerville ranches, been in Garnerville, to help pass an advisory question to fund these services with the PALS tax, a quarter cent sales tax. And the question, in, in rare form, in Douglas County, passed, and passed overwhelmingly, which allowed us to go to the legislature and get enabling legislation to have a quarter cent sales tax implemented in Douglas County. That was a long answer, and I'm sorry.
Thanks for that refresher. I, I mean, I remembered parts of that, but thank you for that.
So as long as we're on that, I think it's important for us to, the, the acronym there, PALS, stands for Parks, Airport, Library, and Seniors. Is that correct? However, and that was formed for all four of those entities, however, the airport has become self-sustaining, and even perhaps a small profit center there. So they have exited out of this process, and so now it's just basically Parks, Library, and Seniors, right? Pills? Okay, 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 we can go on.
The final revenue source comes from charges for services, so we average about $2 million annually for charges. And we are always working to grow programs and increase participation in all of our facilities. This slide talks about the transfer in from the general fund to the Room Tax Fund to cover services provided to general fund departments like snow removal and grounds and maintenance. This transfer is based on actual expenses from the previous year. At one point, we did do an analysis of what it would look like if we privatized these services. We, for snow removal and landscaping, we went out to RFP to identify fair market costs for services. We worked with the Public Utilities Department, Public Works, sorry. The contract would have been housed under Public Works. We did work with them and both snow removal and landscaping companies to make sure the RFP we were putting out was a request that people would bid for. The landscaping was just going to be really basic mowing and mowing services at non-park facilities and the median strips that we currently maintain. We did receive two bids through this process, and the lowest bid showed that the county is still providing the service at a better cost value than the private sector.
Ms. Adie, can you go back one slide, please? Just, just to take a moment of your time, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Scott Morgan. I like to talk about every budget year, what happened in 2007, which is the start of the Great Recession. The Room Tax Fund is a fiscal indicator of the health of our economy and our community. And in 2007, we started to feel not just a squeeze, we felt devastation, to the point we were talking about closing the lake library, reducing library hours, cutting off ballfield lights for youth sports, closing satellite meal facilities at the senior center because revenues were so slow. And we filled the commission chambers with your residents and taxpayers essentially begging you to tax them. For the first time in Douglas County in my career, Douglas County implemented the single biggest tax increase on its residents without a vote of our people, and were applauded and lauded for it. Please do this, and so they implemented 2 cents of the utility operator fee, something that we talked about. There was a half cent dedicated to the community center when that was constructed to help support these functions and to support the transfers to the Room Tax Fund and the library in future years. And so it was implemented, and this is a, a tax on utilities, primary electricity, phones, natural gas, not sewer, not water, not propane, which now generates $1.9 million approximately for the general fund. That money goes to the general fund to help sustain the transfer, which primarily helps sustain the library now and justifies the transfer to- sustain the library now and justifies the transfer to the Room Tax Fund. So there is, there's dollars covering those things that were supported by the residents to continue those services in Douglas County. I'd just like to point that out, because years past, transfers have always been a contentious point. Why is the general fund supporting this function? Why is the general fund supporting this function? And I'd just like to point this out lest we forget that these were supported transfers by our residents through an increased tax. And so I always like to highlight that, coming up to, when we do talk about transfers or talk about sharing funds between different funds, that there is a funding source in place to the general fund to help support those functions. Thank you.
Our next slide talks about some key changes from our base budget to our proposed budget. So overall, you will see in the slides where we were before, during, and after COVID. The proposed budget is based off of '21-'22 fiscal years, where expenses were much lower. During COVID, we furloughed 22 people and froze 17 positions, and we had a lot of maintenance projects that were put on hold. As we come out of COVID and we've started hiring staff again, we did struggle with doing some recruiting, so we strategized and determined that recruiting would be more successful if we had more full-time positions. So we currently remain FTE-neutral, which is full-time equivalency-neutral, but we combined many of our part-time positions to make full-time positions. So you will see throughout the slides that there is an increase in salaries and benefits for many of our funds. Additionally, there was the 11% salary adjustment and cost of living increases that did also increase our salaries and benefits. Also, many major maintenance and repair projects were put on hold since we were not sure what the Room Tax Fund was going to do. So you will see an increase in building maintenance and grounds and major maintenance and repairs as we are catching up. I'm not going to go through all the expense slides, but I've provided them for your reference. So again, please stop me if you have any questions. The slide number 20 talks about our Room Tax Admin Operating Expenses. So this does include our cost allocation to the general fund, payment for the HDL compliance contract, and then our transfer out. This is a breakdown of the promotional expenses that shows where all of our funds are distributed. So we had already talked about this slide previously. This slide reflects our parks operation. As I mentioned earlier, we're doing many maintenance and repair projects that were put on hold that are funded out of services and supplies. This slide shows our capital projects, so we're not going to talk about these today as they will be presented at another time. But these, just to note, that these projects have been taken before the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Senior Transportation Advisory Board twice to create this list.
Okay. And this really is probably a question for Ms. Willoughby, is, so we're not going to address capital improvement projects today throughout the county besides this?
Terry Willoughby, for the record. No, those will be brought back in mid-April for the, all capital projects, and then rolled into the final budget as spending allows.
Okay, thank you.
This slide outlines our, sorry, Brooke Ady again. This is our Parks and Temporary Seasonal Positions. This slide breaks down our recreation expenses. These are our recreation temporary and seasonal positions. These are Kale Community Center expenses. Our Valley and Gym Fitness expenses. Our Valley and Community Center, our Valley Community Center expenses.
So, and all of these salaries and wages appear to be going, every one of these slides, salaries and wages are going, anticipated to be reduced from the '23 budget. Is that correct? Am I looking at that correctly? Salaries and wages from '23 to '24.
Brooke Ady, I'm looking at Slide 29, which is the Valley and Community Center expenses, and this one is proposed to go to increase from our 2023 amended budget to our 2024 proposed budget. Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm looking at Slide 20, salary and benefits. I mean, no, not that, I'm sorry. Slide 22, salary and wages, '23 amended is 648, and proposed '24 is 625. So that's a reduction of... Even though the employee benefits are going up. Mr. Morgan, do you have any? Okay, go ahead.
Jeff Bonner, Senior Budget Analyst. I believe the cause of that may be stemming from, there's a specific line item within the salaries and wages section called salaries offset. And what that does is that calculates a vacancy factor, and it basically allows for the vacancies to be, to reduce the salaries and wages expenses. And I'm looking specifically, it's not on the slide, but within the salaries and wages section of the Parks Department of the Room Tax Fund, in 2023, that salaries offset amount was reduced, the expense by $49,000, and the proposed 2024 budget reduces it by $143,000. So again, I believe that is going to, that is going to be what's driving the overall reduction, is that salaries offset figure.
Does that include Slide 25, where there's, recreation expenses are down also in salaries? Right there?
Yeah, that salaries offset amount is calculated into each department's salaries expense.
Okay, okay, because we were talking about full-time employees or FTEs, and then, but these expenses are going down, so I just...
Right, there's sort of two things happening at once. The overall salaries expense is going up because of the increases in hourly wages, but it's also going down because of that salaries offset vacancy factor. So in some departments, it results in...
I'm not sure I understand that, but if you say so. Commissioner Tarkanian did.
I had a question, but I didn't want to. Okay, so I had mentioned this sort of in jest to you, Mr. Morgan, but what would, what is the impediment of increasing the hours on the weekends of the community center so it's more available when families, the kids are out of school, the families can use it? Is it the employees that you're looking for, or is it the cost?
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director. Really, three factors. Employee, at the time, when we reduce hours, such as Kale Community Center is closed on Sundays all summer long. That is mainly demand-driven in some case. And so in some cases, it's demand. Down here in the valley, it was employee shortages, demand, as well as then we factor in the cost of operation versus demand for use. And the big factor, as we've discussed previously, is we just did not have the staff to fill all those hours. And so where we cut hours is the less peak times, which is typically Sunday. So with the increase in staff and our staffing requirements being met and filled by combining part-time positions to full-time positions being FTE-neutral, we will have that opportunity to expand hours if the demand for that is justified.
I'm sort of at a loss when you say with the demand. I've been in there many weekends, and you can't get on the courts. So the demand's off the charts. And common sense would tell you that if your kids are in school during the week, the time that the parents can participate with their kids in the facility would be on the weekends, but then you limit the hours. I mean, by the time I get out of church, there's only about an hour, hour and a half left of the community center before it's closed, and then you go in there and you can't get a court. So, I mean, I don't, I think the demand's there. I don't know about the employees, that's why. And with respect to the cost, we're spending a lot of money in a lot of areas. I would like to see the ability of families to spend time with their kids and those type of activities provided by the community center.
Scott Morgan, thank you for those comments. Commissioner Tarkanian, we are seeing great demand on Sunday, especially during our basketball season, and that is something we plan on correcting and going to more flex schedule, keeping these hours potentially in the summer when demand is historically low, but expanding those hours when basketball season is in play. Teams and families are looking for court time for practices, and the facility could sustain an hour adjustment during those peak times. And that is something we are planning for the next season. We may be able to pull that off this year towards the end of it, and then go back to a more flexible schedule in the summer with potentially reduced hours unless that demand stays. Because right now, Room Tax Fund is fairly healthy. We are seeing our revenues coming in. We're seeing our fees and charges revenues continue to grow, so there is an opportunity to expand those hours.
As long as we're, as long as you're there, and as long as we're talking about hours, another activity that's going to, we're looking at pickleball. I don't see, maybe, we're talking about pickleball, six new courts there at the community center. And I would imagine the demand is going to be very high on the weekends for that as well. So we're probably going to, and we would schedule that activity out of the interior of the building, not just out there on the courts. Is that correct?
Yes, Scott Morgan, Community Services Director. Right now, we have four courts inside the building, and demand is high, particularly in the day. It is actually, at times, contentious for court time between basketball enthusiasts and pickleball players. And when we do not have a scheduled event such as a league play, courts are first come, first served, unless they are reserved for a practice or for league play. And so there's starting to become conflict between pickleball players and teams wanting to drop in to utilize the courts, or volleyball for that matter, because volleyball season is starting as well. In the past, pickleball was a morning activity exclusively. It is the sport for all day now, including evening. We're hoping some of that demand is shifted with the construction of what we're hoping to provide is eight additional courts on site. We are 90% planned development and hope to be out to bid for those. We are pushing the envelope, because there was a request initially to get four courts, six courts, and it keeps growing, so we are stripping that thing down to get eight quality courts if we can, and then come in with some additional improvements to support those, and some of which are in our capital plan for a restroom in our current capital plan, and some landscaping around that to try to dial the thing up a little bit. But we are taking the pickleball demand seriously. We're also having our current CIP that you'll be talking about at a later date, converting an overflow parking lot into two pickleball courts up at the lake to meet that demand. We are also seeing a lot of demand and request at the Park and Recreation Advisory Board level for additional courts in North County that that body will be struggling and battling with coming up in their next year CIP.
Thank you.
Moving on to our supplemental requests, these will be reviewed today by Finance Director Terry Willoughby. We're just including them here as, for informational purposes. And now I get to talk about all the fun things we've done as a department, and what, I'll start with our Parks Department and the projects that they've been able to accomplish during the last year. And this is in addition to their regular maintenance and upkeep responsibilities. One of the big projects that they're working on right now is replacing all of the fairground arena lights. That's a really exciting project that is going to...
I, I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt you, but I need to go back to that one slide on supplemental requests, because something stuck out in my, in my mind. And this is the economic vitality element of this, the pilot facade program year two. So, so what we're able to do with that economic vitality process of pilot facade, and that's with, I believe, the town, the Main Street Gardinerville operation, right, Ms. Granahan? I see Ms. Granahan here in the audience. So, so I think it's interesting that that process is funded out of Parks and Recreation and not out of our general fund. Is that, is that my observation here?
For the record, Lisa Granahan, Economic Vitality Manager. Yes, the transient lodgers license tax allows for expenditures for economic vitality projects, and this facade improvement program is currently being paid for in this fiscal year, the $10,000 from last year. And so the request is $20,000 for next year. And then Main Street Gardinerville, as well, is upping their match so we can do more with that program and really help out those small businesses in the heart of our downtown and with our historic buildings.
I just thought it was important to point out where those funds are coming from, so...
Correct, they are not general fund money.
Commissioner Hales.
Can you tell me about the tennis court repair?
It's all those pickleball users.
Well, that was, that was one of my questions, is are we making, marking pickleball lines on all the tennis courts?
Brooke Ady, there are several tennis courts within the valley that do have pickleball marks on, lines on them. We do allocate funds each year to do repairs for the tennis courts, as we oversee several tennis courts. So this current year, we resurfaced the tennis courts at the high school, so this would be another set of tennis courts in the future year, Johnson Lane.
Okay, so the high school now has pickleball lines?
The high school does not, this Brooke Ady, the high school does not have pickleball lines, but it has been resurfaced as a tennis court.
Is there a reason we didn't put pickleball lines on there?
The high school, Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, the high school tennis courts are used by the high school for their competitive play during school hours. In discussion with the principal, they were just not ready to introduce a morning influence of pickleballers during school hours. So those courts are typically used in the summer as well as in the evening, and I think it is a discussion to have at a future date as demand continues to grow. We have had, not had anybody ask for pickleball court lines at the high school. There's only a porta potty to service that, and so that group is, travels in large numbers and really has a social influence. So they like the Lampy Park Courts, they like the Johnson Lane Courts, and they really want their own exclusive courts. They are becoming a bit more like golfers and tennis players, where the, you know, the net height is not regulation when you play on a tennis court. And so, and the surface is much larger, which means the pickleball's going to blow around, and it takes them a while to gather the pickleball. And so that, it slows down the game for them, so it is not their preferred surface. Two years ago, that was all the rage, let's convert all the tennis courts. And now all the rage is, we need to have our own courts because a tennis court is unacceptable.
I can attest to the fact that if you want to run a town hall in this community, all you have to do is put pickleball on your agenda, and the room will be packed, okay? Whether you're going to talk about it or not. So that's, that's how popular this sport has become. So anyways, okay, so, but, okay. Any other questions regarding that page before we go on? Thank you. We can move on then.
Brooke Ady again. Here are the fairground arena, arena lights again. Here are pictures of our tennis court resurfacing at Douglas High School that we had mentioned previously. We were able to do some painting out at the Dangberg Home Ranch and some repairs to the exterior. We installed a playground at Bratovich Park. There is a new dock out at Topaz Lake that was installed. We finalized, I believe it was Phase 2 of the shooting range, the surveillance, so here's some pictures of our surveillance system out at the shooting range. And next, I'll talk about our Douglas County Recreation Events. So we do continue to operate as an evacuation center as needed. In the last few months, we were a warming center, we were evacuating... In the last few months, we were a warming center, we were evacuation center for people who were impacted by the atmospheric rivers and floods. We continue to offer youth sports, and those programs are running very strong. We have adult sports programs. Our Rock Wall is thriving, and we have some great programs with our Rock Wall. We have a Parkinson's group that comes and does the Rock Wall. We continue to have our father-daughter dance in our concert in the park. This Saturday, we are having a mother-son game night event, which will be our first time ever, so next year I hope to have pictures of that. It's been really successful selling tickets, so that should be fun. And this year, we had our first-ever Dios de los Muertos event that was a very popular cultural event out at Heritage Park that we hope to continue as well. This slide talks about our recreation impact, and so I think it's really important to highlight and note that we have given 512 scholarships this last year to youth and teens. So these are kids who have a place to come, to be with their friends, and exercise, and get involved in activities. This slide also talks about some of our other programs that we have and the funds that have been raised for the facility.
Could you tell us more about where those funds come from?
The funds are raised through the Incredible Kids Fund. So the Douglas County Community Foundation raises funds through different events to help support free, to offer free scholarships for youth and teens. They also get a Douglas County Community Grant to, I believe last year it was $10,000, to help support the fees for this program. All right, next, we're going to move on to our Social Services Fund. Within Social Services, we have indigent services, social services, the community health clinic, and the Adult Day Club. Here are the revenue sources in Social Services. There are two funds under Social Services. One is the 216 Fund, which is the general budget, and 215, which is the supplemental budget. The 216 is the fund, is the main fund for social services and what they operate out of, and is used to provide aid and relief to indigents as outlined in the NRS. These are services we, as a county, are mandated to provide. The second fund is the 215 account, which collects funds that support the 216 Fund. The 215 account is the six to ten cent fund, or once referred to as the Supplemental Medicaid Fund. In 2013 and 14, there was a surplus in this account, so in order for us to spend down the funds, there was a shift in allocation. Social Services began collecting six of the 10 cents, and the remaining four cents went to the general fund to support the roads.
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, I asked Assistant Director Ady to yield some of her time on the report for me to talk a little bit about this portion because it's significant. And we are going to talk about it a little bit more if we are agendized on April 21st to talk about something pretty miraculous, almost incredible in government terms. And we're going to touch on it a little bit here today. But if County Manager Cates remembers, when he first became a county manager, I was up here at the podium going, "The sky is falling, the sky is falling." Of the six cents we are collecting, we're going to need to get eight, we're going to need to go to eight because we are dipping into reserves, we are deficit spending. And back in the day when, in 2013, 14, when we shifted, we reduced the amount from 10 cents to six cents, it was an intentional spend-down of reserves. And about four years ago, we were seeing those reserves replenished through expenses, and we were anticipating significant expenses like every other organization or government, county government in the state of Nevada, long-term care expenses were careening out of control. It has also been my mission as the director of this county department to do one thing, and that is keep people in their own homes as long as possible and give families independent choices for their leisure time experiences and reduce juvenile delinquency. If I could sum up what I do in those categories, that is it. And long-term care, once Social Services was put underneath Community Services in the Senior Center, it became a real opportunity to coordinate services to try to make a difference. I call it the Great Experiment. And as we'll see in some future slides, not only have we succeeded in controlling our long-term care costs, we have controlled them, we have contained them, and for the first time ever, we have cut them in half again. And we have some slides that are going to show that. That savings to Douglas County, as we estimate it, and the state of Nevada, $2 million annual savings in taxes for long-term care, as estimated by the state, and additional $2 million savings to the state in match money on an annual basis. This program that we have put together, and I'm proud to say, in about 10 years will pay completely for the building that we constructed that kind of houses this model, that brings this whole thing together. It's not just the adult daycare, although that's really important. And when we talk about the adult daycare, we have approximately anywhere between 20 to 25 clients annually. Every single one of those are of high risk of going into long-term care. And every single one of them that goes into long-term care has a high probability of ending up on our tax bill and being paid for by the residents of Douglas County. So whatever we can do to keep people out of long-term care and becoming indigent, because it doesn't take much to reduce and deplete all your financial resources and become indigent in Douglas County, we save the taxpayers. And it starts with our Homemaker Program. It starts with our Dart Transportation, it starts with the Meals on Wheels, the Senior Program, the Senior Recreation Program. It starts with keeping our families healthy so they have the ability to take care of loved ones rather than ship them off into an institution. And it finishes with the adult daycare. This coordinated approach has done almost miraculous things with the service levels that we're providing, and it really accomplishes two things. You know, one, it meets that goal, keeping people in their own home, but it serves as a way for people to die in their own homes as well. And I don't want to be too morbid, but you know, it's a common occurrence down at the Senior Center for somebody to come in and go, "Guess what? George passed away in his own home, surrounded by his loved ones." And we all go, "That's really sad, we're really sorry." But inside, I'm going like, "Yes." You know, goal accomplished, truly, goal accomplished. That's how we all should go, because nobody wants to go into that institution. And then the end result is significant expense to organizations. And it shocks me that other organizations in the state just calmly pay this bill, just pay this bill. And we're talking about, and we didn't mention, one of the other funds that is a direct pass through is called the 214 Fund, the State Accident Fund, which is a pass-through. We collect a tax on there, you can see it really small print in red, that we collect from our taxpayers, we ship it off to the state, and it was initially intended to serve as an accident fund for mainly uninsured people that got hit jaywalking down in Clark County, and the impact it had on UMC Medical Center to provide those services. So we developed this fund to pay for people that didn't have insurance that got hit by motorists. Well, with the Healthcare Reform Act, that essentially disappeared. So NACO now administers this fund to pay as an insurance fund for organizations that exceed eight cents of their long-term care costs by organization. Carson City exceeds it almost every year, goes to the state and says, "We need a bailout. This is breaking our county," and they use this particular fund to bail out. And that's important for you to know because I'll reference some slides. One of the slides we talk about is what the state estimates Douglas County's eight cents would generate, and that's the dollar amount we'd have to hit before we could go to the state to get a bailout. And that was part of my presentation three years ago to say, "We need eight cents, we need eight cents, because if we don't collect eight cents, I can't go to the state and get an insurance bailout for Douglas County." And that's the time we were anticipating that our long-term care costs could exceed $2.2 million in cost to Douglas County. Our long-term care cost in 2022 was $250,000. That's miraculous, that's incredible. Carson City pays over $2 million in long-term care, goes to the insurance fund every single year, similar-sized population. We also compare Lyon County as well. We have more seniors than all the counties combined, or higher percentage than any other county in the state of Nevada. And we are managing this fund that really is pretty incredible. Brooke, just throw up the slide. This is, and I'm sorry, it's hard to read. These are our long-term care costs over the last five years. And you can see it was holding steady there, right around that half a million dollar mark. And then in 2022, it dipped to $2,000, or $250,000. We also, because we check it monthly, we monitor it monthly. This is, this is a statistical goal of mine personally, and we are still tracking this current fiscal year to hit that $250,000 mark again. And so it really is incredible, and you can see what our neighbors are spending in long-term care. This is a manageable problem. This is something that every organization should really adopt, this holistic approach to serving their residents, one, just for the cost of it, but the quality of life and the humanity that it provides to families is also a byproduct that is hard to measure other than it really feels good. Can you go to the eight-cent cap slide, the one before, right after that? And we'll hit that later, but it's the slide next to it. Keep going, keep going, keep going. It's the other bar chart, that one. You see Douglas County is in the gray there. That's what the state of Nevada sets as our insurance mark, what they estimate we should be paying in long-term care costs, and it exceeds $2 million, which means if we spent over $2.2 million in long-term care costs, we could go to the state of Nevada, administer it through NACO, and go, "We need a bailout from this motor accident fund, 214 Fund, to help us pay so it doesn't significantly impact." As you can see, if you could compare those two slides, we're not even close, which is a really, really good thing. And so did a pretty incredible program that ties a lot of things together, senior services, recreation, Dart Transportation, and social services. Because before, I will tell you, we weren't doing so good in that capacity because social services got the bill, we just paid it. And there was never a thought about what we could do to abate it. And so if you could go back then, right after the historical township, I'm going to run through just a couple of slides. And so as Assistant Director Ady was mentioning, the, we have two different funds, a 215 and a 216 Fund. They both collect a property tax, one collects that six cents, the other one just collects the general social services. We spend all of our dollars out of the 216 Fund to support these functions because that fund has to grow. The 215 Fund has to grow, or I'm sorry, the 216 Fund has to grow by state law 4.5% every year. So we have some questions that come up, "Why don't you spend some of that money out of the 215 Fund?" Well, that fund is not restricted by, restricted to growth by state law. So the 215 Fund, which is the medical supplemental fund, collects the six cents. We then transfer it into the 216 Fund, and that's where the expenditures are collected. So if you look on Slide Number 50, you're going to see where the revenue comes from, collects approximately $2 million in property taxes, and all of the expenditures, for the most part, are down in a transfer out. And those transfer outs are kind of spelled out for you here. Part of that pays for the public guardian, and then part of it goes to the Senior Services Division for their service to indigents. We calculate everybody that comes into the Senior Center for a meal program, Meals on Wheels fills out an application, and it has income requirements, and if we can determine that they are indigent, we can pay for some of those services out of indigent funds. And then, Brooke, I just already kind of killed the, buried the lead here on Slide 62. Long-term care is a real budget killer. It actually bankrupted White Pine County when this is 15 to 20 years ago. White Pine County, prior to the recession, when gold prices were tanking, everybody left, all the taxpayers left, and only left an elderly population. And their long-term care costs exceeded their total county budget. And so they went into state receivership and were operated by the state as a result of really one thing, long-term care costs. It's so important to our county budget because it's an expense we don't have a choice on. The state says, "You shall, you shall pay this. The first dollar you get shall go to pay for your indigents." And so we took that really serious, and we put together a program, and we'll talk a little bit more on the 21st with some key players in Douglas County and some key services to help address this, and we're going to hopefully celebrate that on the 21st. So go ahead, you already kind of went over the bar charts. And then these are the expenses in the 216 Fund, and they are, are the revenues, because it does also collect its own tax rate in the 216, but it really needs that transfer in from the 215 Fund to sustain itself. And so it's primarily supported by taxes, as you can see, is the big revenue sources. And then the 216 has an expense, and this is the last slide I want to talk about. If you go to Slide 56, Brooke, you're going to see that in 2022, we spent $276,000. 250 of that were long-term care. You'll see that in 2023, their current budget we're in, we're still budgeting, because you don't know, you don't have 100% control, we're budgeting $500,000 in long-term care. And that's why that number is big. We're also in 2024, budgeting $500,000 in long-term care. Our goal is to hit that $250,000 mark. This is why we are not burning reserves any longer in this fund. This is why I'm not standing before you to go, "Patrick, I need eight cents. You got to take that, I got to get two cents back from the roads to sustain this fund because we are holding our own." And actually, we have been able to develop fund balance as a result of some of these measures we've taken in this fund, something I'm very, very proud of. So thank you for indulging that.
Mr. Morgan, while you're there, I believe this is the program that was recognized as one of the finalists in the Annual Cashman Award. Is it, can, I, that was, you know, I read your, your application, I suppose it was, for recognition for that award, and I, one of six finalists was very impressive to begin with, but I had difficulty, I disagreed with the judges. I think you should have, we should have won that award. But anyways, congratulations on that recognition as well. So, great program.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman, Gardener, Scott Morgan. Yes, that's correct, we did receive recognition, and I'm a little bitter about it, we should have won it. They're not even close, not even close to anything else that was presented that evening, considering the fiscal impact and the community impact. So we are going to celebrate the Cashman Award, hopefully on the 21st. So thank you for recognizing that.
Okay. And where are we now? Are we on Slide 65?
Brooke Ady, we're on Slide 57, which just talks about Social Services, general expenses. Next is, are the community health clinic expenses. And then the Adult Day Club expenses. Next, I'll go to our Senior Services Funds. These are the programs that are supported under Senior Services. Here is our, the revenue. This is a breakdown of the revenue, previously discussed the PALS tax and the utility operator fee. You see here where it is dispersed, and then the general fund transfer in. Next is just a historical overview of the amounts of the general fund transfer in, transfers. These funds are a major component of the Senior Services Budget. They are used to balance our budget, and they provide critical services to seniors, including our congregate dining at the community center and our satellite sites in North and South Counties. Next are our expenses, which I'll turn over to Jeff Bonner, Senior Budget Analyst.
Jeff Bonner, Senior Budget Analyst. This is just a breakdown of the different categories that compromise the expenses within the Senior Services Fund. So it's just broken out into salaries and wages and benefits, and then those two kind of go hand in hand, and then the services and supplies line item as well. It's just a little further detail within each fund we, similar to how we identify Similar to how we identify the categories in the room tax and social services fund as well.
So once again, I'm seeing a tremendous, actually, this shows a real lower proposed budget for salaries and wages. Can you give me some insight into that?
One second. I believe the answer is going to be similar. I just wanted to confirm with the specific line item in 260. Just give me just a second.
Chairman Gardner, if you look at 2022, it's gone up 20%. It's the 23, that's sort of anomaly.
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Yeah, I see that now. Yeah, you're, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Historically, sure.
Just globally, the approach it was taken with these budgets. So 2019 through 2022, you're looking at actual expenses. In 2023, that was the amended budget, so that's all salaries, regardless of positions are filled or unfilled. And we did apply a vacancy factor. This was last year when we budgeted. And so that brought the number down a little bit. When we go into 2024, again, that is all salaries filled or not. And the vacancy factor has been updated, so it's a little lower than it was the prior year when we used a different vacancy factor.
Yeah, that's kind of, I can see that, yeah, I can see that now. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Turkian. Ms. Willoughby.
Terry Willoughby, for the record. Also, the amended budget often includes grant-funded positions, which we do not typically put in the proposed budget. We typically compare proposed budget to proposed budget, not proposed to amended for that particular reason.
I have a question about services and supplies there. Is this because of the meals on wheels and the food and the, I mean, this is bigger than we've seen in this category.
It's primarily due to how we are now budgeting for grant-related, both revenues and expenses. We've added a specific line item called Grant Expenses Budget Only that projects the expenses that are going to be reimbursed by a grant. So this, that portion of the line item will sort of self-correct as the year plays out. But we do want to be forthcoming in saying, these are, you know, these are estimated grant. And again, there's also a revenue piece to that as well. But the primary increase in the services and supplies is due to grant-related expenses.
Okay.
Within that fund.
And can you just tell me what those services and supplies generally are?
Those are what you just spoke to. The grants typically go to reimburse, a lot of our different programs, our congregate dining program, meals on wheels program, homemaker program, the ADSD transportation program, and the DART program as well.
Excluding salaries, then?
Salaries are included as part of the, for example, the DART grant reimburses a very significant portion of our salaries expenses for the DART employees.
Okay.
Okay.
Brooke 80, and now I'm going to talk about our Douglas County senior events. So we continue to do our congregate dining, both in the facility, in the senior center here in Gardinerville, Monday through Friday. And we have two satellite locations for, one in North County in Indian Hills and one in South County out at TRE. We continue to have many social events, ceramics, concerts, cookie decorating, and field trips. We continue to have senior games. One of the most popular one we're having right now is pickleball, as we have talked about. And we have field trips for pickleball players to go up to Reno to play at the convention center and play pickleball with people up in Washoe County. That concludes the presentation. Please let me know if you have any additional questions.
Additional questions, commissioners?
That was very thorough.
It was, it was very thorough. Yes, thank you. And it looks like Mr. Morgan has.
Scott Morgan, Community Services Director, Mr. Chair. There were a couple of questions that came up during previous days that I think I'd like to address, if there's still interest. I think Commissioner Hales mentioned an inquiry about the homemaker program. If we added an additional homemaker, how many additional clients could we take on? We estimate between 12 and 15 people coming off the waiting list with that addition. There were also some inquiries regarding DART transportation as far as numbers served in South County. In 2022, that annual year, we had 171 rides coming out of South County. And those were dial-a-ride appointments. And the distinction with dial-a-ride is, a ride of 171 may not mean just one person. When we do a dial-a-ride down in Topaz Lake, for example, we get a call for a doctor's appointment in Carson City, and we do that on Tuesday. And we get another call for somebody to go to Carson City on Wednesday from TRE. We try to work with those people to put two people on that bus on Tuesday. So we'll go as far as calling the doctor's office for the person that wants to go on Wednesday to say, "Could you possibly move this patient to Tuesday so we can stack those rides and be more efficient?" Because we all hear it, you know, nobody wants to see one person on a 12-passenger or 16-passenger bus. But that is the case sometimes for people going for medical appointments. There are two distinct services that we provide. We provide the dial-a-ride for senior and disabled individuals in our county. And then we have a deviated fixed route system, which is the system that you see going between the Rancho's and Gardinerville and Minden. We also coordinate closely with Blue Go, where we have a transfer agreement, where if you come off a DART bus, you don't get charged to go on a Blue Go bus to go to Carson City or up to Lake Tahoe. So those are just some of the uniquenesses of our transit system. There may have been other questions I did not miss, but if there are, I am available to answer those.
Well, I know Commissioner Hales had the question in regards to homakers, so.
Yeah, you answered it, but now I'm mentioning the waitlist makes me wonder if, did you ask for enough? Could you use more?
Sure, and I might defer to Assistant Director 80 for that.
Brooke 80, Aging and Disability Services has a 15-month grant that they have released with some ARPA funds to help support providing services to individuals on the waitlist. So we are looking at applying for that to see if we can do some deep clean services for the individuals on the waitlist. We have about 25 to 30 people on the waitlist, so this will clear some of it. And with these additional dollars, we could provide them some intermittent services. We wouldn't be able to take them off the waitlist, but that is the goal.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I think there was one last question regarding, what would service enhancements look like if we were able to obtain the two additional buses as well as the two additional drivers, which are primarily grant-funded? And we anticipate enhanced service levels in North County, because some of those funds are requested out of an organization called Campo, which is the service provider in Carson City. So we would enhance some of the service levels in North County. And a lot of people don't understand, DART does not serve all of Douglas County. It does not serve the state line portion of Lake Tahoe, nor does it serve the Johnson Lane, Indian Hills area. They are in a service level of another MPO or a metropolitan planning organization such as Campo or the Tahoe Transportation District. So when we go into those services to serve our residents, that's why you see a $30,000 transfer from the Tahoe Transportation District Fund to DART transportation to substantiate our going into Blue Go territory and doing dial-a-ride services that are not provided to our residents by that organization. So we get, we do a transfer of funds to support our dial-a-ride services in the Tahoe Basin for our state line residents. We also, with these two drivers, would enhance services to South County. We are planning a fixed route system, either two or three days a week, primarily on the two days that we do not have a satellite meal program down there that would allow residents from not just TRE, but Topaz Lake, Holbrook Junction, Bodie Flats, who would be all on the stop to come into town and either dine at the senior center or go grocery shopping. It would be an on-demand service, which means we'd have a set time for pickup, we'd have a set time for return. But while you're in town, you can pick whatever in-town services you want as coordinated through the driver, whether you want to go to the senior center for lunch, or you need to stop at Walmart, or you have a doctor's appointment on that day. We will, it will not be a fixed route in town. It'll be an on-demand service for those people that are riding. We're also planning to have, on the three days we have a lunch program, to do lunch pickup at Holbrook Junction, TRE, Bodie Flats, and Lake Top, Topaz Lake residents, to take them to the TRE Center for lunch and then return them home. So those, that's kind of what the service level snapshot would look like if we are able to obtain those positions and those vehicles.
Thank you. That's impressive. When I, when I look at this, you said 171 rides. That's almost every other day. You know, I mean, we have 365 days a year. So 171 is almost every other day that we're having a call service that goes out and picks those folks up. So if we have a fixed route system, I would imagine, hopefully, we would actually make better use of our resources, both manpower and vehicles in that regard. I, one thing I didn't understand is that we don't have any service into the Johnson Lane area at all. And, you know, we have a lot of seniors out there as well and in the Indian Hills area. And in Indian Hills, we're only offering congregate meal services up there on the two days it doesn't go into TRE, which is Wednesdays and Fridays. So if we can perhaps expand service into North County through that process, whether it be Campo or whatever, perhaps we can get those seniors also and that population into our senior center on a more often basis for those lunches as well. So, I mean, the lunch program you offer, I've, I attend it down in TRE, and that's the same meal that you serve at the senior center on those days. And occasionally, not every day, by the way, folks, not every day. But anyways, I do attend it every once in a while, and also your senior center. Those meals are absolutely incredible. I mean, they're actually bigger than I can eat. I often don't eat the whole meal. So incredible amount of service to our seniors, and we appreciate it. So any other comments or observations, questions?
Yes, one of each. I think it would be good, maybe you all understand better than I do, but sometime in the near future, I'd like a presentation on the overlapping public transportation entities and try and figure that out a little bit better. And that was my observation. Question is, I'm just still back on the waiting list for the homemaker. And I know you're hoping to get some grant money to take some more of those people off the waiting list. But is there a reason you didn't ask for, say, one and a half FTE, rather than, I know you asked for part-time to full-time, other than, obviously, we're not made of money. But would another portion or full homemaker be well-used?
Brooke 80, we do have a vacant position right now, which is a full-time position. So once we get that filled, that will also help reduce getting some people off the waitlist.
That explains it. Thanks.
Any other questions, commissioners, observations? Once again, impressive program, and our hats off to you and your staff for what you bring to our seniors in this community.
Chairman Gardner, if I may, Scott Morgan, Community Services Director. I don't want to make it sound like we don't serve North County. We do. We just don't get reimbursed for it. We serve dial-a-ride services to our residents in Indian Hills and Johnson Lane. If they have a doctor's appointment and they can't get Campo to come out, which they don't, we pick them up. We take care of them. We bring them into town for lunch if they need those services. So we are not abandoning them. We used to get compensated from Campo for every ride we did in their area, because they were not serving it. And that went away. Now they're making grant opportunities available to us. So we think we'll be able to enhance those services.
I knew that, and I forgot to mention, I wrote it down and forgot to mention it. So yes, thank you. Okay, are we, so we're done with the community services presentation today? Is that correct, Ms. Willoughby? Okay, well, I'm looking at the time, and we were anticipating possibly not having to take a lunch break yesterday. But, I mean, for today, but it is 25 to noon. Do, and I need a break. I don't know about the other commissioners. I need a break for maybe 10 minutes. But my question is, the next presentation, how long do you anticipate that taking? And maybe we should, short?
Short. So it's Room Tax Fund, and then Tim DeGelder, who's a library director, will be available for questions on his budget, and then we'll, we're ready for budget approval. And then Jenny will have a small presentation on personnel changes. I'm not going to go into a lot of details on the Room Tax Fund, because the community services team has done a much better job than I would ever do, so.
Well, I still need to take a break. So it's 11:36. Can we return at, let's say, a quarter to noon, and then we'll go into that? Is that good? Okay, it is 11:45. Call this meeting back to order. All five commissioners are back. And I am encouraged by our Chief Financial Officer indicating that we should be able to wrap this up in another hour and 15 minutes. So we will, we will not plan on taking a lunch today. We're just going to power through this, and then we can go to get something to eat after that. Okay, Ms. Willoughby? You're on.
Do you want to, the next item is number two?
Okay, so I should read that into the record. Okay. For possible action, discussion to approve the fiscal year 2324 tentative budgets for all Douglas County and Douglas County redevelopment agency funds. Discussion may include a general overview of the Douglas County budget and presentations by staff, including but not limited to presentations on the following. The General Fund, all departments, including supplemental requests, special revenue funds, including supplemental requests, debt service funds, enterprise funds, including supplemental requests, internal service funds, including supplemental requests, capital projects funds, including supplemental requests, and redevelopment agency funds. Being, this being conducted by our Chief Financial Officer, Terry Willoughby, and our Finance Director, Jenny Cartwright.
Thank you, Terry Willoughby, for the record. You've heard, the first item would be to, for the Room Tax Fund, which you've heard in extensive presentation. At this time, for the tentative budget, total resources budgeted for the general, for the Room Tax Fund are $25,70833, and total uses of $24,198,958, with the current year surplus of 1.5 million. I'll briefly go over the supplementals. They have request, supplemental requests, replacement of carpeting in the Douglas County Community and Senior Center at $80,000, purchase of a scissor lift for Cale Community Center at $35,000, and in purchase of an industrial riding vacuum for Valley Facility Gym and Fitness for $15,000, two items for Parks Operations, a floor machine at $20,000, and two side-by-side utility vehicles for, at a total of $50,000, purchase of two passenger vans, these are replacement items, for recreation at $100,000, two new one-ton pickup trucks with snow plows at a total of $110,000. For Cale Community Center, purchase of four-wheel or all-wheel drive vehicle at $50,000. And again, the pilot facade improvement program enhancement of, an additional funding of $20,000, for a total of $480,000. I thought the department did an excellent job on justifying their supplemental requests this year. Typically, the equipment is replacements. We are working with Community Services staff, getting a full replacement schedule in place so we can do some forecasting. But I think that they're all justified. They either increase, they're either replacements, or they're increasing efficiencies. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. My recommendation would be, include all $480,000 in the final budget. They certainly have the funds to do that.
I just ask you what pa, I'm sorry, I used your first name, but what page are you reading off of the sup-
It's got all the supplement, or is it a hard copy?
Hard copy.
Should be both. You should have received that, a hard copy today.
It's tab one, and there's an 11 by six.
Yeah. Jenny Cartwright, for the record, this is provided in the binder under tab one, excuse me, tab two, fund balance, and also in the 11 by 17 format.
And if I could add, one of the things that the Community Services team has been very receptive to is working with me, we, part of the supplemental, supplemental material today was the Room Tax Fund Balance Policy, which is similar to the General Fund with a few differences, and they have worked collaboratively with the finance team on developing that policy. And it was adopted probably in 2020, I think.
Any other questions, commissioners? Everybody good where we are? Since we know questions, we can, I guess we can move on to the next item, right? Okay.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, the next item would be the Library Fund Budget, and this is our final fund presentation for this year. At this current tentative budget, they have current resources of $2,237,900, $2 million, and total uses of $2,278,278, so a slight annual deficit of $40,378. They do have supplemental requests that would, are not included in that amount, which totals $69,500, including a marketing plan for $20,000, a building study to, on the current library to possibly grow the physical footprint at $20,000, new online services at $22,500, and a mobile story walk for $7,000. And if any of these supplemental requests were approved, the, the library is only funded through their share of the PALS sales tax, which is 55%, and then a transfer from the General Fund. So if the board were to approve the supplemental requests, then the transfer from the General Fund would have to be increased, which would decrease the surplus, or we'd have to adjust the budget in the General Fund. And with that, I could turn it over to Library Director Timothy DeGelder for questions, or questions?
Yes. Where can we find this in our binders? The library, what, that's fund, what is it, 220, 234? No, 224?
220, Fund 224.
What tab would that be under?
And Jenny will provide that information.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, the library supplementals are on tab four of your binder in the green divided section towards the back. There is an 11 by 17 format of the library requests. It is supplemental agenda packet, page 402, in the large format. I also provided an updated list of supplementals to the board members and in the agenda packet for today. So that's a three-page listing. The library requests are duplicated in there.
Okay, just so we're all on the same page, in the, these are special revenue funds? And so-
Yes, these are special revenue funds. However, the funding is, the special funding for the special, this particular fund is only from the PALS sales tax, as well as a funding from the General Fund, are the two revenue sources.
You concern me when you say we're doing a, we're in a deficit spending on this particular program. Is that, is that what I heard? So that's why I would like to look at this particular item in the, in the binder, to see where we are on that.
Do you have the pages, can, for the actual budget pages, detail, other worksheet?
Well, I actually found it. Just happened to find it. So, so we're going to page number, actually, I think we might have discussed it a little bit yesterday, on page 32 of 118 is the library, right, Fund 224. And so we had revenue totals of $2,237,700, $2,237,900 on revenue, and then we're looking at, on page 37 is the expenses. So it shows a $40,000 deficit, and that, does that $40,000 deficit also include the supplementals? Or is that in addition to that $40,000 deficit?
Terry Willoughby, for the record, that deficit does not include the supplementals. It's strictly the base budget.
So then the supplementals would, would increase that deficit? Is that what I'm hearing?
Terry, that's correct.
So we have a deficit of $40,000, and we have supplementals that are requested of an additional $69,500. So we're basically almost, if we approve all these supplementals, we're at a deficit of $100,000 in that particular area. Is that right?
Terry, yes, that would be correct. If all supplementals were approved, you'd be at a deficit of $110,000.
I'd like to see this balanced.
Terry Willoughby, for the record, we could certainly work on that. Typically, what happens is, we would neither need to work with the library to cut their base budget to balance, or we would have to increase the General Fund transfer.
I don't know that I have a good grip on the total supplementals, that overall, they're going to be coming out of the General Fund, and how much money there is. I think at the beginning, we were told that there's enough money for all supplementals, but I, I, I need more information like that.
So typically, for the other funds, that has been the case. For this fund, there is not enough money for the supplementals. So we try and been trying to take them fund by fund because they're all separate. So in this case, it's not a balanced budget right now, any, with the base budget, and then you would be adding the supplemental requests on top of that. And what's the transfers in? Can I get that?
Full page.
Library?
Yeah. I can't see. 1,6, 1,649,310. Oh, that's PALS, wait. General Fund is 576,830.
So currently, the current library budget includes a transfer from the General Fund of 576. That's provided to fund the library programs.
1,000.
Yes, 576,000, sorry.
Pardon? Oh, right, right, right. 576,000. So just to be clear, most of the library is funded from PALS, the PALS tax, but we also have 576 transferred from the General Fund? Is that accurate?
Terry Willoughby, that's correct. I believe, as I spoke yesterday, the library fund has not always been its own fund, and that's one of the reasons we moved it into its own individual fund, was to be, for one, to give the library director control over their fund and spending and accountability, but also to be transparent about the exact amount of support from the General Fund.
So just to be, sorry, redundant, but what they're asking is for, right now, in the budget, there's already a 576,000 transfer, and with these supplementals in the deficit, that would be 676, about?
Terry Willoughby, that, that's one option. Another option would be to, what we have done in the past when they had capital requests would be, the board would approve the project, but not the funding, with the stipulation when they had greater-than-anticipated fund balance in- when they had greater than anticipated fund balance in, after the audit, that those projects could be funded at that time. So you've already seen them and then they get, that's their first bite at that apple.
The other thing here is that, is there anticipated capital improvement projects also coming forward from the library? Because that would add additional costs, as I see it. Am I mistaken on that? Yes, this would probably be an opportunity for Mr. Gelder, DeGelder to address this.
Thank you. Tim DeGelder, Library Director for the record. Currently, we don't have any capital improvement projects in the works. We're just trying to figure out our new strategic plan and how we can fund certain things. So.
Okay. So, but there are some capital improvement projects, as we discussed about a month ago when you came forward, that had been delayed. The carpeting and the shelving.
Yes. That was, that was carried over from a.
So I have to ask our Finance Department, is that, those funds have already been set aside in the current budget in order to handle that? It's just, there's been a delay in the execution of that process.
Correct. And that was the process I spoke of before where when those projects originally came forward before the board, I don't remember what year it was, but the, they weren't approved as part of the actual budget. But then the projects were approved and we, the library funded them through adjusted opening fund balance and then they were delayed. So, but the funding still is all there for those projects.
So, Mr. DeGelder, has there been any attempts to take a look at your base budget and see where you might be able to bring that into, into balance with the revenues? And then erasing that $40,000 deficit? And then where you might be able to find that in the, for the, for the capital, I mean the supplementals as well?
Yes. Commissioner, thank you for asking. We have a list of four items that were in our supplemental cost. Item number four is our story walk. We, we're going to work with the cultural arts, community art project. And it's possible that we may work together and make that a community art project. So that funding for the $7,000 may be funded alternatively. And we are also doing a library friends gala event. And one of the items that they may fund is our story walk. So that may be one item on the supplemental budget. I will be able to come back to you and tell you, yay, that item was funded. For the new online resources, we are going to also look at some grant funding for that from the state. The marketing plan, we have a lot of talented people and I was, mentioned that maybe the county manager office could help us look at what the county marketing plan is and what the library can learn from the county and how we can all work together. After watching the social services presentation, we do some things at the library that would, we would love to tie in with that. So there's, there are several things on our list that we possibly could complete and have done. So the answer is yes, we are looking at that and we have alternative ways to get this funded because I really want to do this and I will find a way to get, I will find a way to get it funded if you all can't do it for us. I know you have a lot, the whole county and everything else to work on. So we, we will find a way to.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any recommendations out of finance?
More questions?
Sure. Absolutely. Of course.
As I look at these three, the only one that looks like it might be ongoing is new online services. Is that a one-time or an ongoing?
That we would like to look at new, so probably would be an ongoing if we, and it depends. Someone wants to fund a 3D printer for the library. So we have some fun technology create maker station. We would probably get some additional software for that when you, there's a lot of technology when it comes to creating something 3D. Same with our teen room. We may get some movie making software, some special effects software. That would probably be a one-cost deal. But if we created something like test.com or tutor.com to help homeschoolers with exams, help people with subjects that they're not experts in, get tutoring, that probably would be an ongoing cost if we added that service and it was very popular and we wanted to keep that service. So that would be.
Jeremiah Gardner. So one of the hardest things for any elected board is to sit here and say, hey, we don't want to fund something that is popular to the public, okay? And obviously, the library is an important part to the public. I'm personally very concerned if we continue to spend and spend and we have a drawback in revenue and which most experts say that there will be at what point in time, we don't know. If there's ways to fund these programs outside of going into our transfers from the general fund, we should do that as a board. And if there's extra money, even if there's supplemental money that comes in, or what do you call it, aggregate money that comes in, that can go towards our rainy day fund or to fund stuff when we do go through a drawback. I would love to fund everything you want and, and, and other departments want, but we need to tighten our belts right now in anticipation of the future. So it seems to me, you, you mentioned these different possibilities of funding these supplemental requests, that that's the avenue you should go. And if somehow that doesn't work, then isn't there, at the end, we do the augmented funding and stuff?
Teri Willoughby for the record, yes, we typically use that for one-time funds. So I think it would fund anything but the online services, which seem to be ongoing. But I can certainly work with the Director DeGelder to work on, you know, finding other funding. As far as the marketing plan, I, the, our communications team might be able to assist with that as well. So they might not need to go to an outside consultant or at least reduce those costs. And I would also like to, we talked a little bit about the PALS sales tax and there was a resolution done 2019 where we, the board, we set in stone, not in stone. It could be changed by resolution. But they identified certain percentages for each entity. So senior services, the library gets the bulk of that. They get 55% of that PALS sales tax, which has been increasing, of course. It could drop based on a recession. But that intent of setting those percentages is so that the library, so all the other funds could have the ability to plan on their revenues for the future and they, it would increase the stability of the library.
And I think, Tim DeGelder for the record, I think part of the supplemental requests that we have is kind of our wish list that we would like to make sure if we were moving in the direction to enhance our services, that's the way we would like to go. So, so it's showing up in the budget, but we do respect every department and we love the county and everything they do. And we understand that you guys have tough decisions and we will find a way to keep things moving forward in the library, depending upon your decisions. And we will work very hard to do that for our community. So we appreciate everything you've done so far. So thank you.
And I'll, I'll echo what Commissioner Turkin is saying. You know, we'd love to, to do everything. We don't necessarily have the finances to do everything. And so, and it's difficult for us to, to, it's gut-wrenching at times. My gut does not feel good denying requests of this nature. But a question that we have to ask is, is it an appropriate time to do a building study on growth? Is this an appropriate time when, when we are looking at some certain factors? So that, that's my reservation. I want to do it and yet I, you know, have to respect the, the, my gut tells me it's maybe not the time right now. So Commissioner Hales, you?
I favor the approach that Ms. Willoughby suggests. And that is approve, but I'm going to get the wording wrong, approve but not fund. And if there's greater than anticipated fund balance, these projects are approved and they can do them because, to the extent that they are not ongoing charges out of greater than anticipated fund balance.
I guess my concern with that is if there's other avenues to, to fund it, you should fund it that way. And if there's a greater than anticipated revenue, that money should, in my opinion, my one fifth vote, is we use that money to save for a downturn or for something that we don't have alternatives with.
Teri Willoughby for the record, the board would certainly have to approve that. It's not going to happen automatically. You would get the opportunity to make that decision when that comes back and we present the adjusted opening fund balance and how much is available and how much they're spending.
Love to put the pressure on our good man right here to fund this other ways and save us the money.
And I would love to come back and have my little scratch off list, doing, doing, we got it, we got it. So I will be coming back to you to give you an update long before this audit in November. So.
Okay. You know where we're going here? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your attendance today and input. So. Moving on.
Unless the board has other questions, we are at the point of approving the entire budget. So we will talk about that base budget included all these funds that you've heard. And we talk about the county being a multimillion dollar corporation that does a million different things. You can see that this is true, all these. So our total without the towns, which we're not approving today, total resources of Total uses, 132,396 and 12. And supplementals with, that we have approved are, and I'll read these totals. This is from the sheet you were provided today. Total general fund personnel for, total general fund supplemental requests. This is what has been approved so far, 1.2 million. Room tax, 480,000, zero for the library. Other special revenue funds of 820,000. Enterprise funds, 286,000. So those amounts would be coming back to the, in the final budget if, if that's approved today. So the supplementals that were not approved, I removed the management analyst from the general fund. Two items from the general fund, the master plan and the transportation plan are not funded at this time and they'll be coming again for the adjusted opening fund balance and then the library supplementals request.
So what you're going to be looking for after we do public comment is a motion by this board to approve the tentative budget.
Yes.
As discussed, right?
Correct.
And presented. Okay. So if we have no further questions of the Finance Department and Ms. Willoughby, we will then go to public comment and then we'll come back and address that question, right? Okay. So at this time, we will entertain public comment. As I indicated before, public comment is limited to three minutes and you'll see a timing light. We ask you to come to the podium and print your name, state your name for the record and then we'll start your time. So is there any public comment here in chambers? Don't everybody get up at once? Okay. 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 Since he no public comment, we'll come back to the board. If there's no further questions, we'll entertain a motion to approve the tentative budgets as presented for the fiscal year 2324.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Noah Sad to approve the 2324 tentative budgets as presented by our Chief Financial Officer and Finance Department Manager. Since you know further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Teri Willoughby.
Okay. So are we now going into item number three on the agenda?
And we will be bringing back the final budget, May?
But we will have some other budget items.
We have the capital improvement program mid-April and then we'll put everything together for the final budget. And I've taken some good notes on some of the things as far as the department presentations and we're going, I'm actually going to be sending out a survey to department heads about talking about how we might get that done and for feedback on the budget as well as how to include the commissioners in the budget planning. So I thank you and I'm going to turn that over to Jenny Cartwright.
Okay. So we're now going into item number three on our agenda today. With the, with this item and with possible public comment after this item and then closing public comment, this will conclude our budget hearings for this year on a tentative basis. Right? So at this time, I'll read that item into the, into the record for possible action. Item number three, discussion to approve the full-time equivalent FTE position listing for fiscal year 2324 tentative budget and a reconciliation of personnel changes from the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget, being presented by Chief Financial Officer Teri Willoughby and also our Finance Director Jenny Cartwright. I believe Jenny Cartwright is going to be the primary presenter here. Is that correct?
She'll be ready in just a second. Jenny has been taking over the reconciliation of personnel from me and so she will be presenting this today.
Very good. Please proceed. And is there a page that the public can tune in here?
For the commissioners, it is in Tab 1, Packet Pages 7 through 20. And the PowerPoint is Pages 405 to 410, under the supplemental material for March 31st.
You're going to do a slide presentation on this one? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Jenny Cartwright for the record. So there, there's several pieces to this item. There is a listing of all of the FTEs or positions, full-time equivalent positions provided in the packet. You'll notice that that, the fiscal year 2324 proposed budget FTE listing is 624.77 FTEs. That's provided on page 20 of today's packet in Tab 1 of your binder. And also, I've provided a reconciliation of all the changes that took place from the fiscal year 2223 FTE approval through changes made during fiscal year 23 up to the tentative budget, starting July 1 of 2023 for fiscal year 24. So we're going to walk through those three different, the numbers for those three different points in time. So it'll essentially be July 1 of 2022. And my apologies, for some reason, when I was preparing the FTE listing, I, in my mind, I had July 1 of 2023 on some of those pages. I had July 1 of 2023 on some of those pages. My intent was to show July 1 of 2022 numbers, then add the changes that this board approved during fiscal year 23 up until the presentation of this item, and then also show the FTEs July 1 of 2023.
Did you say page 20 is a supplement for today?
Jenny Cartwright, the page 20, well, your binder probably doesn't have page numbers. The online version, I believe, has packet page numbers, which is what I was referring to there. So it would be like the second to last page of tab two of your binder, excuse me, one of your binder.
I don't have a binder, so.
Oh, I can get you one. They're, they're out front. My apologies for that.
And just for the public, could you explain where that is again, in the supplemental materials?
Certainly, the online version is available in, well, there's two different parts to it. So the position listing is available in today's special meeting agenda on page seven through 20, hence page 20 being the total page number. And then the, there's a reconciliation PowerPoint presentation, which is being projected on the screen right now, and that item is in the supplemental agenda packet for today, starting on page 406. That's the hardest part, getting on the same page.
Yeah, once we're on the same page, it's a lot easier to follow, right? Yeah. Right now, we're going to go through this handout that you have. Okay.
And if, if everybody's ready, I'm happy to start. I'm seeing nods. So I will first point out that Terry's presentation at the beginning of this whole budget process showed an FTE count of 580.39 FTEs. This listing also includes the towns. So the total on that previously mentioned page 20 or at the back of your binder, we have 624.77. I didn't want there to be any alarm that we magically created 35 more positions. Terry's presentation was specific to the budget worksheets that we were looking at for this process, so it had 580.39. This, this entire FTE listing has 624.77. 35.44 FTEs belong to the towns.
And the towns include Town of Gardinerville, Town of Linden, and Genoa.
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Yes. So if you subtract the 35.44, we get to 589.33 positions. Comparing that number to the 580.39 that was mentioned at the very beginning gives us a reconciliation that we're looking to explain of 8.94 FTEs, and you will see that consistently throughout this presentation. 8.94 is the difference that we're looking for between what was approved July 1 of 2022 and what we are requesting July 1 of 2023.
Except that during the, during the 2223 year, and this chart shows it very well, we, we had, we approved 5.1 either changes or new employees to the county during that fiscal year, during the current fiscal year, right? So, so basically, then what we're looking at is approving 5.4 new positions from 23, in the 2324 budget.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, yes, that is correct. I would point out that the 5.44 FTEs are what was included in the base budget. So there is an additional eight-point fraction FTEs included in the supplementals that were just approved. So those are not in this packet or this presentation because that was uncertain as to what the board would, would choose to do with those FTEs. So essentially, it would be the 5.44 plus eight point.
Thank you for that explanation.
Zero five.
Yep.
And so really, this slide covers exactly what we're, we're going to just go through the details of. So there is a detailed listing of every, I guess, fraction or portion or FTE that relates to these numbers, provided in the reconciliation sheet in your binder. But the purpose of this is to summarize it, if you want to go to the next page. So I just want to touch first on the cleanup items, the negative 1.6. This really was just us adjusting in the system those items that this board approved in last year's adopted budget that weren't properly reflected. There's always a little bit of cleanup and things that we don't have perfectly in our system because those changes happen between when we present the final agenda and when we actually adopt the budget on July 1. So, so these were just cleanup items the board had already approved. There was nothing different in the actual approval of these items. It was just us tidying some things up. And the details of those are on the next slide, so you can see which positions were making up that negative 1.6 total. So typically, these are items where we were moving positions around, transferring FTEs to different items, and we just needed to finalize that.
Questions, commissioners? Okay. Okay.
And then moving on to the next slide, we're covering the changes that were made during the current fiscal year. So this is the 5.110 FTEs that were approved by this board in various stages during the fiscal year. Those are detailed on the next slide. So you can see we had the emergency operations, emergency management coordinator, the district attorney, which was actually approved in the budget, but added, we added it during this fiscal year, and then some, some changes with judicial services and recreation positions. And indigent defense, I'd point that out, too.
Now, some of these positions are, they're being financed by other things other than the general fund is, or income that we're getting in the general fund in specific areas. Is that correct, Mr. Cates?
If you don't mind, Jenny Cartwright, for the record, this is all FTEs countywide. General fund, all the way through special revenue, enterprise, internal service, we're covering every change that happened countywide here. So to see the funding for a specific position that's listed in this slide, you could refer to the individual FTE listing that's provided in a good 13 pages or so to see which specific department it belongs with, as far as the funding source goes for the changes.
Right. But for instance, we're adding positions in the county manager's office for emergency management, but that, that really is, those are reductions in, in contracts out to the fire, east for fire for those services and bringing that back into the county manager's office, so.
Chair, if I could, Terry Willoughby, for the record, that's correct. So this is strictly looking at the personnel. It's always a hot topic to make sure that we're not creating random positions, that we have good position control. So that's what this is designed to do. So for example, like the indigent defense position took work away from the contract indigent defense coordinator and is providing it to a lower staff level, so to cost, it's a cost savings measure because he bills per hour. You don't want someone that's billing at a high rate of pay to do lesser, some things that would be more appropriate for a lesser paid staff. And same thing with what you mentioned with emergency management. We have, you know, a contract over here with non-county personnel, and now we're replacing with county personnel.
Right. And I guess that's my point that I'm trying to make, is that, is that even though, and we always get accused of growing government, growing government, growing government. So that's what we need to be cognizant of here, in my mind, is that, is that we're communicating to the public that, that even though we're adding those positions, those are, those are positions that are being either, we're eliminating the contracts to do those functions, and we're bringing them back in. But it's actually, even though it might be an incoming county employee, it is actually probably going to save us some money in, in a number of cases.
Terry, that's correct in both of those examples I provided. It's, it's really a more efficient way of spending money.
Mr. Chairman, I think your statements are absolutely correct. The only thing I wanted to add is on the emergency management positions, those aren't coming into the director, the county manager's office, those, that's a standalone department. The emergency manager is going to be housed in our office, but it's a department director. And the, the budget needs to be cleaned up a little bit here. We did not create three new positions for emergency management. We created two. The accounting specialist is an existing position, serving 911, and I think all of its costs were allocated to emergency management in the budget and, and should not be. It should be split by emergency 911. The 911 surcharge fee is what's been funding that position, so just wanted to point that out.
And Terry Willoughby, that is correct. I believe the director position will eventually be not solely funded through the general fund because they will be serviced, the 911 communications team is in a different special revenue fund. So if the director is supervising some of those employees, we would allocate their time based on the actual activities. So there will be some cleanup on this before final. And county manager Cates is correct. The accounting specialist was not a new position. It was a part-time position funded solely through the 911 special revenue fund, and now we'll be serving both functions, so we'll fix that for final budget.
But am I correct? The director position will report to the county manager. Am I mistaken on that? Oh, okay. That's, so when I said coming into the county manager's office, I didn't necessarily, you know, it's still going to be a department head that's going to report to the county manager, right? Okay. Just need to make sure we're, the organizational structure works there for, for us, okay? So maybe I'm getting a little bit into, too much into the weeds, but anyways. Okay, keep, keep going, I'm sorry.
And then the next list covers the position changes that were added to the fiscal year 2324 tentative budget. However, I would point out that the China Spring youth camp positions are still in a state of flux. We plan to finalize those and bring them back in the final budget.
Chairman Garner, question with regards to that. We're only funding a portion, our share of China Springs. Is this, these five new positions all being, the expense all being placed on us, or is this being part of the proportion that, that Douglas County has?
For the record, Patrick Cates, the, now, the positions are, are paid for through multiple funding sources. So most of the funding for China Spring comes from either a state appropriation or assessments on the 16 counties that participate. We make up a small fraction of that. And I think what's happened with the FTEs at China Spring is they also received an ARPA grant from the state to help them restore some positions, and I think that's, that's where there's too many FTEs that need to be sorted out. But no, those, that'll be borne by all of the funding sources of China Spring, not, not just Douglas County.
Okay, so that's why I'm a little, I think this is a little misleading because we're not adding five new employees for Douglas County, but you're counting them as employees for Douglas County.
Terry.
They, they are county employees, they're just being funded by multiple sources. So the state's funding them, the assessments fund them, but they're county employees. Every employee at China Spring is a county employee. But most of the funding for the program comes from outside of the county, if that, that makes sense.
If I could explain that to Terry Willoughby, for the record. So the counties all pay into the China Spring special revenue fund, and then, which is part of the county. So it's, they all pay in, and we see one revenue stream coming into the fund, and all the expenses related to China Spring are in that fund.
I guess that was the point I was trying to make in regards to the indigent assistant as well, right? I mean, that, that's coming out of a different special fund. No? Okay.
Indigent defense is housed in the general fund.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, so that concludes the presentation of the FTE reconciliation and ties the numbers in from last year's budget to this upcoming year's budget, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Well, so we're looking, we're still going to need a reconciliation of, of China Spring. So we're not looking at a five, necessarily a 5.4 increase in employees here because we have to sort that out still. Is that right?
The board approved those positions when they accepted the ARPA funding, but I am working with Director Garrison to sort out that for the final budget and how to incorporate, how to show that ARPA, that one-time funding as a resource.
Okay. So the only real positions we've so far got is for the supplemental process, is that right? I see, I see Ms. Cartwright shaking her head, yes.
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, yes, and those small incremental changes listed on that, the last three items here, the .1, .09, and .25 FTE positions that were added as an increase in the base budget that was presented this week.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions for the commissioners? Okay, so that concludes your, the, the full-time equivalent position listing explanations, is that right? Okay, so we've concluded item number three, and we can go to public comment if there's no further questions from the commissioners? Okay.
Yes, that completes the presentation.
No further questions, we'll go to public comment. Okay. So at this time, we'll accept public comment regarding item number three, discussion to approve the full-time equivalent position listings. Is there any public comment here in chambers on item number three? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board, and what kind of, is that just a, I mean, what kind of action do you need from us?
Jenny Cartwright, for the record, this is a request to approve the FTE listing, which is built into the base budget, so that we have that on the record, that these FTEs are approved on a countywide basis for the budget for fiscal year 2324. Question?
What do we want to do in regards to the China Spring issue, then?
Can we make a motion with a caveat or exclude those, or?
Yes, my recommendation would be a motion to approve the listing as presented, with the exception of the China Spring, lest the five positions noted for China Spring.
I move that we approve the full-time equivalent position listing, with the exception of the five positions for China Spring.
Motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner Noasad, to approve the full-time equivalent position listing for the fiscal year 2324 tentative budget and reconciliation of personal changes from the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget. of personal changes from the fiscal year 2223 adopted budget, minus the five positions for China Spring. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Okay, so I think we're, why don't you tell us what the next step is in this whole budgeting process, please, Ms. Willoughby?
The next step is we scurry back to our offices and work on the final budget, and the capital improvement plan. I would note, I would like to note, we did, Assistant Director, you met her at the last board meeting, I believe, she is in place, those positions were approved by the board in a separate action, so we will, we'll be bringing that back as final, just to clean it up, but make sure that everything's in the operating budget. I don't want her to hear this and think she doesn't have an approved position, but those positions were approved as part of the ARPA funding, separate action.
Okay, and then, and then we have a meeting scheduled, will, will that be a special meeting, or will the CIPs be brought forward in a normal Board of Commissioners meeting?
We'll work with the chair to schedule that, and the county manager's office to determine if we need to have a special meeting, or if you want to add that into a regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, then, we'll go to closing public comment, and before we do that, I just wanted to remind, remind the public that we have a special meeting called, of the Board of Commissioners, for April 10th, at the Hard Rock Hotel, at 10:00 a.m., to discuss the updates of the new, of the recommendations of the Vacation Home Rental Advisory Board, or the changes to that ordinance. So that will take place, once again, on April 10th, and in the Tahoe Township, at the Hard Rock Hotel. At this time, we'll accept closing public comment, is there any, so public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of Commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken. Is there any public comment here in chambers?
James McCallum for the record, it's the only time I've ever been, the only name on here. I just want to thank Terry Willoughby and the staff, this was very easy to follow along, anybody in the community could have come here, gotten a binder, and followed along, and very transparent, and I just appreciate that. Thank you.
We appreciate your short public comment.
Yes. So, and, and I appreciate you not needing to take the whole three minutes, which is not required, okay? So if there's no further public comment here in chambers, then we'll call this meeting adjourned, and we will not be meeting tomorrow, or there is no need to meet tomorrow, as has been agendized to the public, in the public record, so that meeting is, is canceled, and the next meeting of the Board of Commissioners will be our regular meeting on April 6th, I believe it is, right here at 10:00 a.m. So, thank you, gentlemen and ladies, and for this process. Thank you for your presentation.